Houston, I forgot to announce Good and Welfare. If anybody wanted to sign up, you can come up now if you haven't already signed up for Good and Welfare. We have the notebook up here if you want to speak at the end of the meeting for any particular item of concern. With that said, could you please tell us your name and your title? And then just use the mic.
Thank you.
Steve Krupp. Could you spell it?
S.T.E.V.E. Krupp, A.R.U.P.P.
And your title?
I own Tech Services.
Okay.
Technology consulting, installation.
So you're not, you don't work for Comcast?
I do not work for Comcast. I work with Comcast in many communities and offices and businesses, but I don't work for them. And I have a remuneration from them.
Got it. Could you say if there were, while I kind of give a little bit of background, just very briefly. So many of you recall that we had Channel 92, which was our local access channel. Hasn't been working for a while. In the past, we used it to broadcast meetings as well as rerun meetings if you missed them. And also to run a continuous loop of useful information on PowerPoint that went over and over in a loop of next of meeting dates coming up, when your maintenance is due, when your special assessment was due when we had one, and other information like that, board member emails. But it hasn't been working for the last over a year now. So we don't know exactly why that is. Apparently some equipment went missing. And I'll let Nancy or maybe Doreen address that later. But for now, we need to get that back up and running. And we need to replace the equipment that's missing. So Steve, could you take it from there?
So I came about a week ago, ten days or so, and took a look at what was the situation at that moment. And then we figured out what steps you need to. Do you have the email perhaps that I sent you with the different steps? I didn't know it was going to be a presentation. Anyway, a key in that piece at every step is Comcast. There was a cable that allowed you to access Channel 92. So anyone who had Comcast TV could go to Channel 92 and see the community. And so Comcast provides that. That's no longer here. And we've managed to contact the appropriate party at Comcast who's setting that back up for you. And they'll come and install it. There was no communication from Comcast as to whether there was any cost for that at this point. This still maybe I don't know. They didn't mention it. They just mentioned that the installation person would come out. And then so they may have a cost, I don't know. That's not in the numbers I'm saying here. The piece of equipment that was missing is a modulator. It basically turns whatever you put into it to Channel 92 and then connects to Comcast. That comes from a fellow named Dimitri, who was involved with this project. This isn't the first time you've visited this project. So Nancy came in and picked it up. And she involved me because I replaced the phone system for her in another property where we cut her bill in half. So she's got a very good experience with me. Anyway, so Comcast did that. Dimitri had already informed me that there were only certain modulator pieces of equipment that would work. And so that was why he recommended that particular model. Because I had also found a model before we communicated with him. So we got Comcast, we got that. And then, of course, you'd need a computer and the PowerPoint, you know, Office, all of that. So you can have your functionality back to the way it was. And that's included in the numbers I sent to Nancy as to what the project would cost should we get it back up and running.
Okay.
It just doesn't include any costs from Comcast, which we're not aware of.
Okay. What I see in front of me is a quote for $1,500, $1,537.
No.
Is that, is it the wrong thing?
Yes, that's the.
Oh, that's the wrong number.
It came up today.
It's $3,500.
$3,500.
I don't, I don't see that. I don't have that. I see $1,500. That's what we all have.
That would just be the piece of equipment from Dimitri.
All we have is $1,500. Okay. So what's the total? Could you explain? So $1,500 for the equipment?
I can pull it up and read it from my tablet.
Aren't they being used?
Not the great, but.
Yes, sure. Oh, really? I wasn't aware of that. I never saw those channels.
They're the Showtime.
Oh, the Showtime ones. They're not working? Okay. Nancy, could you, could you make a note of that and follow up? George, you have something?
Yes, as long as the business, the channels we have it. It was, it was a business we have Comcast is supposed to give you all these channels for working for us in the contract. When we have, when we have.
Just talking to.
When we have the contract for running Comcast in this place, they give you like an offer to us, free channels for running. She's right what they say around the other channels too. They give you to us. We don't have no more. That's a long time ago.
Well, maybe Nancy, could you, could you make a note of that and look into it?
Part of the contract was installed here, we give you access to, they give you free all these channels, including 92. It's our part of the business free. You don't pay any money. What happens is now it's not working for us. The equipment we have in there probably is bad we need. They're supposed to supply the equipment. They have it, they have to give you.
That really depends on the contract, on the last contract that was signed.
Yes, we have to buy the contract.
Have you changed the contract? It's AT&amp;T now?
No, 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 AT&amp;T does not have the contract. Okay. Nancy, well, Steve is looking for that email. Oh, you found it? Okay, great. We want to know is what it's going to cost us to get it back up and running? And what timeframe we're looking at in terms of when we can get that channel back up?
Actually, we should just forward that to you. Because I sent her the email exactly.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah, you can just read it and then forward it to Nancy.
And she'll forward it to us.
All right. So I'll read it and then forward it on? So. I would have printed it out. Right. So here are the things that have to happen in order for this project to be completed and the status of each step. The first thing is Comcast has to schedule a visit with a tech to identify the tap where the community can locate this equipment. We're not exactly sure where that's going to be, whether it's in the office or the other equipment is or there's some other equipment room. So they will identify that. Joy something or other has emailed back Nancy and let us know that they're going to do it. They have an installation department, so someone has been in touch with us. So that, that's finally been set to happen.
When is that?
We haven't gotten their name yet. They're going to contact us. The equipment still needs to be approved and purchased. That would be the box from Dimitri and then a computer or one from the library that needs to be repurposed. However, that's going to go. There's other little equipment. I'll get back to that at the end. You've got like a day of installation, whether that's me or Comcast or whoever's doing whatever. There's a budget line for that. And then unknown issues which are already addressed would be a cost from Comcast or any other equipment or wiring or services you may need depending on where the location is and how far it is from your internet or their TV or whatever is you need to make the whole thing work. The one other thing you should consider is TV is, you know, a great medium, but there are a lot of people who eventually may not use a cable connection for their news and the other things they get. And you may think about spending the same budget on a method that doesn't involve Comcast and TV as your medium so that people could tune into the community website to see a live feed or a history of recorded feeds of meetings you've had. If they put, maybe even facilitate voting in that fashion. And they can use tablets, phones, TVs and computers. Just a thought.
Yes.
Well, you know, a lot of people think TV is the first thing that comes to mind, but then not everybody uses that medium.
The thing, the thing is, is that, yeah. And actually, we do have our meetings. I put them on YouTube. As you can see, we're recording this right now. And they're all available online on YouTube. But not everybody, especially older owners, they're just not comfortable necessarily with the computer. And we are paying for it anyway as part of the Comcast contract, which runs another two years. So I feel if we're paying for it anyway, we should utilize, we have a right to and.
Well, the same content you can, because if it's running on the computer, whatever the fee is from Channel 92, it's coming from a machine. So you can always add that functionality later, once I guess TV becomes less ubiquitous in here.
But right now, we do have it. So could you tell us again what the total cost would be?
$3,500 would be the budget I would put on. And whatever extra fee Comcast, oh, you said it's included, but I don't know if they're going to charge you for laying cable.
Oh, okay. Right. Yes, so we have.
Well, they explained to me. They expressed it. And they explained to me that they remove it when it's not being used because it interferes with their signal. Now, I don't think they remove it from the ground if it was that way, but they just probably unscrew it. So, you know, that's what they say. When the tech actually comes out here, you know, why would somebody pull a cable up if that's a wrong thing?
So we need to check.
John?
Yes.
As George had mentioned, should we not looking to see what the contract states first before we get involved in any of this?
Well, I believe Comcast has already been contacted starting back in like August. I know Doreen started and I know Nancy's been following up. But I don't know. Nancy, can you add anything to what Comcast told you in terms of what their contract?
What the contract was, we had 92 before. How long is that contract?
It's still 2020. I mean, our contract is still 2020.
No, 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 for that 92, 91 and 90.
It's all part of the same, it's all part of the same contract.
Right. So should they not be paying for some of this that we're looking at?
Apparently, the equipment went missing. So that, that's the issue. Is that right, Nancy? The equipment went missing?
The equipment was missing and they, the equipment was missing and so that's what basically stopped from.
But that's $1,500.
No, it's, well, it was that piece of equipment and then whatever computer was feeding them. So, and then the time to put it back together and then reinstall new.
Computers are not expensive.
No, a computer is $500 or so. You can get a Celeron for less, but I don't, but in computers, it costs less than that. But if you guys want to go to best, you know, use the one from the library.
It's a nice one.
Yeah, I'll interface with your community at whatever level works for you.
Yeah, that would be great. So I guess we just need a motion to approve the expenditure of $3,500 or?
Or less.
Or less versus up to. It's called, your company is Smart Communities?
No, Smart Communities is Dimitri. So part of that $3,500 includes his quote for that machine.
Yeah.
And then he had another product.
He also recommended another product that lets you run, it's a monthly fee. It's a subscription product that lets you insert advertisements and messages and makes it easy for you to manage that way. Whether they have a web component or an easy interface, maybe that also would include his subscription fee. So that might accomplish two things. But I'll let him send that information.
We were broadcasting live. Can we, can you make that happen again? We were actually, I don't know if we were using, I don't know what.
Well, you're talking about on Channel 92. You were broadcasting. That's, yeah, that would be.
I guess that was being utilized?
No, that's.
That's just a projector, isn't it? Okay, so I don't know how we were getting.
There was, there's a webcam in the corner.
Oh, that's what it was.
And that's, that's wifi is, there is a wifi in here. And I didn't investigate where that router exists, but I can find it.
But that's, that's what we want, yeah. Yeah. Because if some, you know, if somebody can't come with a camera, we should be able to utilize that. And that's why I want to make sure that Channel 92 is available. Because, you know, last meeting, nobody had the camera.
I included a webcam in the quote. That is supposed to you in case that went. Well, okay.
John, according to the budget.
I came in here to look at what I found and I didn't see any camera.
According to the budget, we don't really have.
The only thing I saw was that and I assumed I used it.
$3,500. We don't, according to the budget, we really don't have $3,500. Now, let me just.
I believe, I believe we have a budget of 1.5 million.
Well, let me just, let me just.
1.5 million, it's very small.
One sec. We haven't had 92. I mean, I'm here over 25 years. We never used to have.
Everybody shut their phone off, please, or put it on silent, please.
I mean, the ones that we're interested in is the people want Channel 90 and 91. 92, how many people here actually look at 92?
Well, it's mostly for these meetings. And any additional programming that the board might want to do, like for example, if we could do a segment like Meet Your Treasure. I'm sure a lot of people would tune in for Bob and Nancy's budget. That would be.
How many years we don't have?
It's over a year. It's over a year.
And we survive.
Yes.
From a value for money.
I'm not a salesman.
I know. Just from a value for money perspective, you know, you know, if this ends up being $3,500 it's going, it'll probably be over $5,000 by the time all is said and done. Like, are we really going to get the value out of that at this point in time? Especially with, we only have two more years left with Comcast. And then, you know, that could very easily change to AT&amp;T. And I, I wouldn't want this equipment just to be, you know, not worth anything. So I just asked the board to really consider that. If there's good value that you think that.
Well, maybe do, then maybe just go right to a website so that the idea of communication is, is a valid one.
$5,000 would buy a live streaming website.
Right. And then, and then you accomplish your goal. For the people who aren't up to today's technology, why make everyone else work that way?
We've been using the same technology if and when we go to AT&amp;T.
Well, not necessarily. I mean, the computer, yeah, but, but the physical piece that gives you that channel may be different with AT&amp;T. In fact, I found a cheaper unit in my first quote before Dimitri got involved. And he said, oh, that may not work. And I've had other, I've tried other, you know, this one I know works with Comcast. There are only two. And he explained why it's technical and not. But then AT&amp;T will come and it'll be a completely different box.
So what would be the web option utilizing that camera or what?
Well, I don't know if that camera, you know, I know it's physically there. I assume it works, but I don't know if it is. But they're so inexpensive, that doesn't matter. The audio though might be an issue, you know, in live stream with a tiny little mic and a camera like that. And then you need to, I don't know if you already have a website or you want to have someone build it or, you know, that's a whole nother, that's a whole nother. Yeah, that could actually be more. Or you can, you can always, like you're doing now, you could still have a webpage, tape the meetings and then play them to whoever wants to view it.
And it's the table.
Loaded to YouTube.
John, can you table this?
Well, Nancy? Before we table, I want to make sure.
Just one who does table and just compares about 90 and 91.
And proposals on the website and all of this and will always function with or without. I appreciate what you're saying about Comcast. They're possible. Just cut our losses on that. And get something.
Well, here's the thing though. If it's part of our contract and we're not getting it, then at a minimum, if we're not getting it, I'd like our contract, you know, to renegotiate the contract down. Because if they're not providing a service that's in their contract.
They're holding up their end.
Then we need to, that's why I want Nancy here.
Sure.
They're breach contract if they don't provide it.
I don't think they'll. I don't think they'll actually be charged from them to connect it, but you still have to buy the equipment. And you guys are making a valid point. You buy an equipment and then two years later, you change it. You know, I have that stuff too. Modems. You know, I tell people, yeah, just buy your own router because.
We had a question back there.
So the equipment for the Comcast Channel 92, was that from Comcast?
Yes.
No, no.
I'm not sure.
About 90.
I don't know.
Equipment that lets, okay. Comcast provides what we call a tap port, a little tiny coax screw with a wire. You have to have a box, electronic with stupid little lights and whatever. And it plugs into 92.
So that's what we had.
That's what you're, that, that box costs $1,500 from Dimitri of Smart Home Communities.
This can stay in every.
I'm sorry?
This can stay even if we change the.
It could, well, it puts out a coax signal. It's likely it would. But, but AT&amp;T could say, no, we don't, you know, just like Dimitri said, well, this one works with Comcast. You can run into issues where they're not compatible, you need a different box. That's the deal with the box. And so, you know, the rest of the equipment will cost or whatever, no matter what system you're doing, is going to be there anyway. So the risk for the two years is the $1,500 option Dimitri. Because that enables you to put it on the TV. The other stuff you would need in order to have your web, you need a camera, you need a computer. But, yeah, you'd still need something local to be.
But when AT&amp;T came here, they told us that we need to use the same cables. So why wouldn't we be able to use?
Well, because it's, no, you can use the same cables for everyone to watch TV. What they change is like Comcast, Comcast service comes in there, Comcast box and there's a coax out. And then it, you know, goes to amps and gets split and everybody sees the signal. Input is a slightly different thing. Okay? It's not that you're watching, you're, you're feeding them a signal. So they have certain conditions. The signal has to be like this and so many amps and whatever frequency and all this kind of bullshit goes along with it.
We've got fiber optic now.
Yeah, well, they're not, like, the box I found was HDMI, 1080p output, which is, you know, normal. I mean, you didn't need 4K, right? But then Dimitri's like, no, it's not going to work. Because Comcast isn't that up to snuff. So you got to find this old equipment that puts out, you know, an older signal, a 720. And, okay.
Was there another question back there?
We want to find out about 90 and 91.
Yeah, I'm asking Nancy to follow up on that. So Nancy, you heard the discussion?
The one in the table.
I don't know what to do. Well, well, my concern was is I believe the contract gives us this Channel 92. We're not getting the channel for whatever reason. And if that's not, if we're not getting the channel, I don't think we should be paying the full contract price.
If not Comcast's fault.
Comcast isn't the reason you're not getting the channel. The reason you're not getting the channel is because your equipment was stolen or moved or it's somehow not here anymore. That's not their responsibility. They met their responsibility by saying, here's a port, here's a tap. There's nothing a guy out to say, this is here and give us your equipment, we'll make it work. See, it's not their fault. I mean, I'm not their advocate, but.
Can I ask you, what is the, what is the device lifespan? What's the average lifespan on one of those devices, the $1,500 device?
Probably five to 10 years. I mean, a computer has a five-year lifespan if you have a good drive in it. So, but, you know, again, Comcast could come out in two years and say, oh, we've upgraded our equipment. Please change your box to HDMI. Which is the one I looked up. They're using an older technology anyway. So we'll point against them.
Well, I mean, two years may not sound like a lot of time, but two years with no, I mean, because like I said, that camera may not be here for two years. And you're not going to have, you're not going to have any meetings recorded or anything like that. If everybody's okay with that, that's fine.
Well, you can buy a camera and record the meetings and if somebody wants to do that, that's okay. That's, that's not $1,500, that's not $3,000 either.
Yeah, well, but that's, that's the thing. Like, if it's not already set up and, you know, there's a system.
When that channel comes up on the screen, all it says is it will be with you.
Well, I have a suggestion for you. Like, I have, I have a camera at home from Samsung I bought at Costco. And it'll record snippets of, I don't know if it's going to take an hour and a half, you know, live feed. But you could probably get some camera, you know, with a service where you can record meetings and store them there and, you know.
Record for the cloud.
Yeah, and then anybody can watch it.
Okay. Can we look into that? Nancy, can you follow up? Because it looks like we, we can, we can table this for now and then next month if we could score that other option. Okay. Does anybody want to make a motion to?
I'm sorry, I can address that, but I wanted to be on time.
Thank you, Steve, I guess, for coming. If you could work maybe with Nancy on the alternative. Rabbit, did you want to, did you want to table it? Okay. Okay, table. Rabbit, we're out seconds. Any objection here? Nancy is tabled. Next item is. Thanks again, Steve, for coming.
Yeah.
Next item is the, thank you. Next item is the security contract.
You're welcome.
And we have somebody to, to come to work for that. Nancy, do we have somebody to talk about that? Okay, great. Could you introduce yourself and just briefly explain this?
Good evening. My name is Thomas Previs. Hello? Can you hear me?
Yes.
No? Is that one better?
John, put it closer to your mouth.
Good evening. My name is Thomas Previs. I'm here on behalf of OS Security and.
Could you, could you just repeat your email search again?
Thomas Previs.
What's my name?
Previs.
Presence?
Previs.
Could you spell it?
P-R-E-V-E-S.
Okay.
We met approximately a month ago in regards to the security services that would be needed or the approach of changing over to security services. So we spoke about that and trying to see where we can go to move forward in the progress of that. Our, our number one goal is to come in, if we come in, is to grab your concerns and implement them into the services that you have going, just somewhat improve it and move forward with that. We pride ourselves on customizing our services to fit your needs. You guys are the ones that pay the association bill, right? We're here to please you guys. We're here to take care of you. When you go home, peace of mind is important. So that's what we're trying to do.
Okay. We, we did review your contract. Actually, we sent it to our legal counsel. And the attorney got back to us, actually today. And the attorney had some concerns. So the attorney was advising that. She, well, the attorney wanted to make a number of changes to protect the association from certain provisions that she felt could have been a little bit more beneficial to our side. So what she's recommending is that we consider a motion to retain the company's services, but subject to the association legal counsel negotiating a contract form that she feels is more appropriate. So that's essentially the motion, the language that she's suggesting for the motion is to move to award the association's security services to OS Security Company and further move to authorize the president to execute an agreement with OS Security Company upon satisfactory terms by the association's legal counsel. So does anybody want to so move? Oh, the entire board received this email. So Rabbit, would you want, you want to so move what I just read?
I don't know though.
Okay. What would you rather do?
I would rather they, they.
Rabbit, can you talk into the microphone, please?
I would rather they submit the version that Elaine is talking about. Let her review it again and then we go over it next week. I'm just not comfortable with it at this point.
Rabbit, what is the situation with the current security that we have?
Well, that would, that would be a question for Nancy. Nancy? That would be a question. Well, that, that would be a question for Nancy. Nancy, that would be a question for you. The, the question was, what's, what's the current situation with security?
Well, there's a few things. You, not only will the association save money on this because right now you're probably going to save about a hundred and fifteen thousand dollars alone in just a workman's comp. And that means that your, that's your insurance somehow is going to go down. Not only that.